All right, it is 6:01 and I'll call this meeting to order. If you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and each month we share a portion of our vision, mission, and core values. And this month is part of the core values. We believe all students have the ability to learn, are important, and have unique skills to contribute successfully to our world. We believe in a value, highly qualified, team-oriented staff that cares for and supports and teaches every student to their full potential every day. We believe the support and teamwork among our school district, families, and communities provides the most effective learning outcomes in and out of the classroom. And we believe in relevant, inclusive, and engaging curriculum that appropriately prepares students for their life endeavors. All right, and at this time, we will start with the Students of the Month from the elementary.
All right. So the elementary school, we've kind of moved to one boy and one girl. We kind of talked about this at the last school board meeting. One of the things I talked to everybody about was like, hey, you know, what do you, what would you like to see changed? And one of the things that come up was Student of the Month. We didn't have enough. We weren't recognizing enough students. And so it kind of started with a conversation with me and Ms. Lana here. And we reached out to some of the community partners, Mill Street Pizza, Dairy Queen. Before I could even stop or get through everything I was saying, Lana was like, sure, yeah, we'll support you absolutely. So, thank you for that. We appreciate that. And then the students were presented already with a Student of the Month certificate in a frame and two gift cards. One was for the Seventh Inch Pizza, the other one's for a small Blizzard. And so what I'm gonna do now is actually call each student up by name. And I just want to kind of read what the teacher said about them, why they were picked. And so we're gonna start with 5th grade, then we'll go all the way down to our kindergarten friends. So, the first is gonna be Bryson Fox. Come up, please. All right, Bryson. So, 5th grade. Bryson is a friendly student who asks for challenges when completing his work. He's been asking more questions and actively involved in his classes. Bryson always works hard and gives his very best. I appreciate everything you do, sir. Addison Patton. We'll make sure. All right, Addison is always pleasant and comes to class with a smile. She's willing to help and often cleans up the classroom without being asked. Addison represents everything it means to be a Cardinal. Congratulations. Great job. Goldie Boggs, 4th grade. Hi, Ms. Goldie. All right, I want to hear what your say about you. Goldie's an outstanding student who comes to school each day ready to give her all. She's an example for others to follow. Congratulations. Very good. Moving to 3rd grade, Briella Manning. No? Briella? Briella? I'm sorry, she may not be. Gunner. You did an amazing job on the pledge of allegiance. I love you. All right, Gunner treats his peers and teachers with respect. He sets a good example for others by making good choices. Congratulations, Gunner. I appreciate everything you do. Ava Schepler. All right, Ava is a kind, Ava's kind and caring to everyone. She always lends a helping hand to others without having to be told. You're an amazing individual. Thank you for being you. Caleb Riggins, 1st grade. Caleb is a sweet, caring, and thoughtful individual. He's a great role model. Caleb is always willing to help and does it without being asked. They are both jewels. Ella Dehoff. Had an amazing pirate hat, by the way. Excellent. Ella has a great personality. She's always willing to help any student that needs assistance. She completes all of her work and turns in her homework. She's kind and caring. She is a great team member. Congratulations. Oh, my kindergarten friends, Mr. Lincoln. All right, so what does teacher say about him? Lincoln is a hard-working, easy-going young man. He is known for his caring attitude towards others. And I know this because I see him all the time in the morning. Congratulations. Great job. And Willow Whiteside. Ms. Willow. There she is. All right, Willow's a hard-working student with a great attitude about everything. Congratulations. All right, and I will turn it over to Mr. Dean. Thank you, everybody.
All right, so for the middle school and high school, we had Students of the Month for 7th grade and juniors. So I'd like Ms. Molly Strange to come up for 7th grade Student of the Month. Congratulations, Molly. And I've just got some easy questions here that I had them fill out. Let me see, can I get this pulled back up again? All right, so Molly, your favorite food was?
Meatloaf.
Meatloaf. There we go. All right. She says that she's involved in volleyball, cheer, bowling, strut and fret, and choir, correct? Okay, I don't have my touchscreen, so I've gotta scroll down here. Let's see here. Her favorite hobbies are cheer, crocheting, 4-H, and bowling. What are you doing 4-H? A lot of building projects, chickens and goats. All right, very good. Keeps you busy, and I know it keeps Mom and Dad busy too. All right, favorite movie is Tim Burton's Corpse Bride, right? All right, okay, nice. I like Tim Burton's stuff. That's good. Thanks. And your favorite subject is science because it's interesting, right? Okay. Just keep going down. Trust me, next time I'll have my touchscreen computer here. So what do you like most about Bloomfield? She says, I like how there's a large amount of different people, diversity. All right, very good. So congratulations to Ms. Molly Strange. You can get a picture with the backdrop. I've already gotten a picture. But Mom and Dad, you can get a picture out there if you like. And our next Student of the Month is Junior Brayden Moore. Get on up here, Brayden. All right, Brayden, favorite food you wrote down was?
Chimichangas.
Chimichangas. There you go, exactly. Brayden is involved, he's involved in the board games club, science club, theater, ROTC, and Hoosier Hills, correct? And you were studying what at Hoosier Hills?
Fire safety.
Fire safety. And you like it, I know. So, and it's also, you're in the play. What is your role this year?
I'm Hans.
Hans. Vozes con frozen, so be sure to show up. And we'll see Brayden there. All right, his hobbies are baking and cooking. What do you like to cook or bake?
Yeah, I do have a huge problem with that cleaning up. I'm so sorry. But I love making honey cake. It's my favorite thing to make.
Really? Honey cake.
I expect that for Christmas.
So says his bus driver, right there. He's involved in art exhibitions, which is part of ROTC orienteering. He enjoys watching movies as well. His favorite movie is?
I Am Legend.
I Am Legend. All right. Is that Will Smith? Is that who that is? Yeah, that's right. Favorite subject? He says, science because it helps explain why we are humans and we know, you know, live and how we are alive. All right. And what he likes most about Bloomfield Middle and High School? The high amount of opportunity to explore what you like and what you aren't really interested in. And so those different pathways right there. So, congratulations, sir. On Mill Street. Thank you to Mill Street Pizza for that. And Molly, and you can get a picture out there, Trish, if you guys want to, and everything like that. So thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Well, once again, thank you for being here tonight for the Students of the Month. And congratulations to the Students of the Month and their families. We invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you need to leave, we understand. And we will pause for just a second.
Man, you're all comfortable right there a little while.
Like, at six thirty-five.
All right, well, continuing on with the meeting. The next portion is actually broken up into four different public comment sections or public hearings. The first one would be on anything on the agenda. And then if there's any there, we will have one public hearing on the proposed superintendent contract. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Do you have recognitions? I apologize.
For the elementary, so for the elementary, practice tests and checkpoints begin, which is a huge thing, especially for this year. Everybody's kind of nervous about it, but we're also really excited to see what kind of data that we get from it. And I know there's a lot of programs out there that try to pinpoint the deficits in student learning so we can address those deficits. We're hoping that this one is really good from the state. Literacy night and color run, we had a great turnout. I appreciate all the hard work that Christie, Jessica, Lauderdale, Vicki Wilson, Kylie Cantrell, and Kayla Graham all put into it. There was many other people out there as well. Seen a lot of people from the Ford. Dr. Bandera was out there as well. I was out there cooking hot dogs, so if you don't feel too good after eating a hot dog. Wasn't me. But I will say we had a really nice girl out there too, so. PTO, PTO, I just want to recognize Ashley Russell. She has really, she reached out to me back in June, shortly after I got voted in. And then we had talked, she had talked about getting the PTO up and going again. And has been relentless in getting it going through trying to do fundraisers and everything else. The last I knew, she had six. They just had a meeting, but she was with a parent-teacher conference night. And I know she signed up a bunch of people there. I have just got a, I haven't got a final count yet. But I really appreciate the work that she's doing with that and getting that going for us, so. I think it's about it for elementary.
All right, thank you. And continuing on with the high school recognitions.
Yeah, so first off, excuse me, just various things that we've had throughout the month. Well, certainly last Friday, we had our parent-teacher conferences. I shared with you all a number of conferences that we had via in-person, on the phone, virtual, and then a lot of email communication also as well. So I appreciate the staff reaching out to parents. And for those parents, you know, when they get into secondary, that sometimes it falls off a little bit, but still, it's, you know, they're our partners and we appreciate that. This has been College Go Week. We are an early college, as you know, accredited high school. We will be going through our biannual now reendorsement. But it's not as intensive as what they have been, so we'll have to turn that in on November 1st. So our early college leadership team will be taking care of that. But they had a pitch in today. Unfortunately, I was not here or missed that. So, but the different things that we had association with that, and our college goal was good. Our juniors went to USI on the 19th, and that again is part of our early college experience. And our sophomores are getting ready next Tuesday to go to Oakland City University. I want to recognize our teachers, that are part of our vertical alignment team. And our also involvement with the Microelectronics Academy. The vertical alignment team is part of the Scale K-12 initiative for microelectronics. And then the academy is, it's similar. I mean, it's microelectronics, but it is a different initiative. And that's gonna be, you know, through the ROI region. I was very, like I said the other day, very pleased that ROI reached out to Bloomfield to be a part of that process. So that's where I've been, and Ms. Bree Karazia went with me today. We were at a summit at Purdue University, which dealt with microelectronics and other academies that they were talking about. We had a blood drive on the 18th. I believe we had about 16 units that were donated. And this year, of course, last month, August, Calvin Myers was a Student of the Month. He's the District 7 president, and they had the District 7 kickoff last Thursday. And so we had a gym full of FFA members and teams from the region, District 7. Which I'm not sure exactly how far it does stretch, but it went as far as north as Riverton Park. And I can't remember as far as south as what it went if we're on the southern part of the District 1. But, you know, happy for that. And then they've got a lot of activities that'll be coming up since Calvin is president. We'll be hosting things here during that. So, and that's been a good month, September, and I'm glad we move in proactively. So thank you.
Can I say something? So, you said Calvin Myers, it made me think of it. Last Monday, we had, we had something over at Aaron's Purpose. And we had two picnic tables, and they were on top of the deck above the carport, and we wanted them in the backyard. And so I can't remember who was helping me move it. Might have been Chris Floyd. We were determined to get the picnic tables off of the, and they're heavy. And we were moving them, and I saw a truck go by and then turn around and come back, and it was Calvin. And he hopped out of the truck, and he had two young men with him. And I'm not sure who the young men were, but I don't know that the two young men were super excited about doing this. But Calvin was like, this is not happening. We are moving these. And bless his heart, I just, we just have some good kids, you know, like, just, yeah. He did, they, they, they got them down, and it was much appreciated, but, yeah.
We really do.
Some good kids. I mean, I saw him go by, and I didn't even think about them stopping. And then they went and made a circle, and he came back, and he hopped out, and he was like, stop. He was like, don't hurt yourself. And he was probably right. But, anyway, you said that, never reminded me of it, so. Kudos to him. Good kid.
All right, thank you. Okay, so back to my original comments. Before I got ahead of myself. We'll break it up into four different sections. The public comments, the public hearing on the proposed superintendent contract, the public hearing on the hearing on the lease, and then a public hearing on additional appropriations. Do we have anyone signed up? And this one is on the proposed superintendent contract, okay? So there, we have none for the public comments?
None for the public comments.
Okay, so we will start with proposed superintendent contract then.
My name is Stella Royal, and as I have recently heard that I have been referred to, I'm not a rat. A retired argumentative teacher. I am just offering some comments here, and I hope that everybody keeps in mind that if somebody offers comments, particularly when you've been invited to an open session of some kind, sharing another opinion is not arguing, but just sharing that opinion. And I do want to share opinion on the superintendent contract. And it's not per se for Dr. Bandera, but for any superintendent contract. If you have a superintendent who is an exceptional employee, and I hope that we always do, and you want to give them a 10 and 1/2% bonus, I think that's phenomenal. I think that's great. I wish you would find a way to be able to do that for all employees. I am concerned about, when I read through the comment, that it's gonna be 1% of the amount of all the grants that the school receives. Because I do, I, I don't know, but I hope that you realize that many of the grants are non-competitive, which means all the school systems in the state have the opportunity. You have to fill out the paperwork and you get them. There's no competition. Everybody's gonna get those, so those are given. There's many, there's many grants that are competitive. Some of them are big, and some of them administrators and teachers spend a huge amount of time on. Both writing them and then implementing them. There's some that aren't so big. I can tell you by, when I did the alternative education grant, it paid for about half of my salary. I wrote the grant. I checked with Michelle and other treasurers when the money came in. Got a little bit of money that I could use in the classroom. At the end of the year, I gathered the data from what the students had accomplished. I filled out the grant, the report. The superintendent, whoever it was at the time, signed it. My final year, when I had retired, I came back in on my own time and helped Jessica with the data. Because, you know, if you're not there and dealing with the data, you don't have that information. There are many other grants that are like that. My guess is there are some in the cafeteria. Many years ago, and I hate to say how many years ago it was, when we were on getting some money based on letter grades, Mr. Dean spent, I don't know how much time. We got ours back, and there was an error, and he found it. And he spent hours recalculating, and that changed how much money that we got and what, and what we were. He should have gotten a bonus for that because it was intense and the numbers were complicated. But I don't, if you want to give, as I say, Dr. Bandera, any superintendent, any of the employees a bonus, do it. But don't do it just to say, because we have these grants. Do it because you think that they're an exceptional employee. I do hope that you will also keep in mind that if you're giving the lead employee a bonus, how that feels to the other employees. Because they're not getting something like that, and they don't have that opportunity. And I hope that you know that the morale here is not good. And if you don't know that it's not good because of the teachers that have left, either you've got blinders on. You don't want to see it. You, you don't have the backbone to say, I've been a part of this and I don't want to admit that. Or you don't have the insight to see that there are some problems. And any one of those options is an issue. But if you're gonna give a bonus, make it be because you think somebody's exceptional and offer it to everybody.
All right, thank you. And any public comments on hearing on the lease or on the additional appropriations hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then on to our routine business. First one is the meeting minutes of the August 29th executive session. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. And all in favor? All right, thank you. And then the meeting minutes of the August 29th regular session. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
And I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you. And then the treasures report. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you. The personnel, do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question. So, does it matter? Emily, it's not paid, so it's volunteer, so it doesn't matter, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.
So it does not have Emily listed as a volunteer? Or does it? See, I can't see it does. I told you guys, I need the reading glasses. Sorry.
That's Hogs listed.
I can't see. I think I'm good. I'll just keep my mouth shut.
And for the donations, I would like to personally thank these people for donating in memory of my father-in-law, Elmer Hostetter, Cam and Amy Gilmore, Bob and Michelle Richardson, and Judy Branstadter. And I do know there are other donations that came in in the last day or two that will be recognized next month, so I appreciate everybody. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. And then the list of fundraisers, do I have a motion to approve?
It's just information, all right?
Is it?
He wasn't here last month.
Yeah. I missed a month. Let's see what I missed. All right. Okay, so on to other business then. The proposed superintendent contract. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you. And then the proposed DCA field trip bus driver contract. Do, any questions or comments there? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much. And then the budget, including capital project fund and bus replacement plan. Is there any comments or questions there? All right, all in favor? Or, excuse me, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. And then the resolution authorizing execution of lease.
So, this is as required by the School Leasing Statute, Indiana Code 2047. Three, after hearing, the school board must approve the lease and authorize the officers to execute such agreement. This lease is the agreement whereby the school corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments. The lease payments will be paid to the building corporation and used to pay the bondholders. Without the lease, bondholders will have no assurance that the building corporation will repay the bonds. The lease is the mechanism by which the property tax collections can get to the bondholders.
Okay, and could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor? Okay, thank you. And then the resolution appropriating the proceeds.
After the additional appropriation hearing, the school board needs to adopt the resolution which outlines the appropriation of funds received for the sale of real estate. The resolution also specifies that the funds will be placed in a school corporation construction account separate from all other school corporation funds until the project is complete.
All right, and could I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. And then the resolution assigning construction bids contracts to the building corporation.
So the building corporation will own a portion of the Bloomfield Middle High School building. The building corporation will also be the issuer of the bonds. The bond proceeds will be held by the trustee bank and will be used to pay the contractors for the work done on the building. As a result, the construction bids and contracts will need to be with the building corporation because the building corporation will hold the money to pay the contractors. The school corporation receives the bids and/or contracts and awards the bids and/or contracts under state law, but then assigns those bids and/or contracts to the building corporation.
All right, could I have a motion to adopt the resolution assigning construction bids to the building corporation?
I'll make a motion we approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.
You can send me an email and I'll get you that. This is board meeting.
Resolution approving First Amendment to master continuing disclosure undertaking.
So the Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a school corporation enter into a first supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. The school corporation has previously entered into this type of bond agreement. The agreement requires that the school corporation agree to timely provide certain financial information to the SEC's Emma database and provide notice of any materials, which that database is on emma.mrsb.org.
Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the resolution approving the first supplement to the master continuing disclosure undertaking?
I will make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. And then request for a- And then request for approval of the NJRTC instructors' contracts.
These contracts are done every year, so it's a separate contract that the instructors have than our bargaining unit, so it's, you've seen this each year.
Yep, okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you, and then property and casualty liability automotive and workers' compensation insurance, would you like to speak to that?
So, one thing that I think's prudent for me to do as a superintendent on behalf of the school corporation is look at all of the major contracts that we have where we're spending money every few years to determine if we're getting the best quality at the best price. So, and on August first, I had had several insurance agents, well, several had been contacting me, and I said I wanted to start the process August first, so we went through that process, and I had discussions with four different insurance agents from August on, and the, we got a quote that will come in lower than what we're currently paying with S-Craft, and with having an actual insurance company as being part of the trust, it'll give us the flexibility to change amounts as we see fit. For example, if you take cybersecurity, within where we are, where we have been, we don't have the control to say what limit we want as a school, it's based on what they set for us. Also, what we've been in for the past eight years has a total liability amount, so if all the schools had the same, like, natural disaster, there's only a certain amount of money that would be split on a priority list, and we don't know where we are on that priority list, as opposed to having our own insurance company, we have, this quote has everything that we have here covered, and if we had a total loss, we could have a total replacement, and that's guaranteed. The, we believe, and Michelle Keane helped me a lot with this process, but we believe that the service that we'll get will be better as well, based on conversations with other superintendents that have these companies versus superintendents who have left the S-Craft that we've been in. So, I believe there's a lot of benefits to making this switch, and so that's my proposal is to take this, these quotes, and accept them, and this would start January first, two thousand twenty-five.
Any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you, and then the superintendent's report.
Well first, I just wanted to say thank you to each of you for giving me a new contract and extending it, I've really enjoyed it here, and I'm looking forward to continuing forward. I also wanted to point out, today I was able to spend time with Christina Fagan at the SIC in Jasper, working on furthering our work-based learning opportunities for our students. Mr. Dean is a very integral part of this, and has several more meetings set up with community partners that are willing to look at potential internships, potential apprenticeships, so it is a very detailed process that just has a lot into it, so we've had a lot of work going towards it, and Mr. Dean's put in a lot of work towards it, so I just wanna thank him, and he's got a meeting coming up in October where we have community business leaders coming in to further this discussion, to see if next year we can have these partnerships to get more opportunities to our students. Also, I also wanna thank Mr. Dean for something else, he and members of his team, Mrs. Fagan, and Mrs. Evans, and Ms. Burton are working towards having a student-run business, which one of the biggest things I like, and this is just a personal like that I have, is the potential partnerships with community organizations. As you all know, schools historically have been very good at asking for and receiving donations and help from the community, but I want that to be mutually beneficial, so some examples, I thought it was so cool last year when the Blues and barbecue event was going on in town, and they had a really specific need, and they called up Mrs. Evans, and she walked into the bakery, and some students walked in, and they met that need for the community. And right now, there's a similar request from a local bank that we're seeing if the bakery can help with. Those types of ways where the school can benefit the community, I think are just a great partnership, and shows great goodwill, and for the community that we live in. So, and then I also just wanna mention that pretty soon, at the next board meeting, you should be seeing the bus bid information, as this is the last year in the six-year bus bid contracts that we have, so that'll be coming up soon. I know Jonas Johnson has been working very diligently with Misty to come up with the routes and the bid process, and so look for that upcoming.
Alright, thank you. And, oops, is there any board member comments and items for future agendas? Alright, seeing none, our future meetings are the regular school board meetings on... I'm sorry.
Just real quick, the cafeteria got a donation, and normally you acknowledge it, but I don't spend that money until you acknowledge it, so did you get it, is what I'm saying?
I didn't get it, it's a gift to them.
It's been within the last week or so.
I sent on my board notes that I got a donation from the hospital family, check, did you guys?
I did see it on the update, the weekly update, I think, so.
So, just send it to me, and we'll look at it, and we'll find it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Our regular school board meeting is on Tuesday, October the twenty-ninth, because of Halloween, and Thursday, November the twenty-first, both at six PM here in the Middle High School Media Center, and this meeting is adjourned, thank you. Okay, so this is for you.